We're now move to the public comments section of the agenda. At this time, members of the public may address the Board of Supervisors on any item on the agenda excluding public hearings or on any issue that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. This is the only opportunity for public input except for scheduled public hearing items. Comments shall be limited to three minutes per person. When you are called to speak, please step to the podium and we request that you state your name and city of residence for the record. Please note the light on the podium. The green light means you have three minutes. The light changed to yellow when you have one minute left. And the light turns red when your time is up. We ask that you observe the time limits so that all who wish to speak will have an opportunity to do so. When addressing the Board, please address the Board as a whole through the chair. Comments to individual supervisors or staff are not permitted. Madam Clark, do we have how many speakers?
We have 20.
Okay, let's have three names first.
First three speakers, if you can line up behind the podium. After Janine Robbins, the next three speakers are Mike Robbins, Muhammad Ali, and Jordan Hoyberg.
Good morning. Two weeks ago at the Anaheim City Council meeting, Todd Spitzer spoke. Todd Spitzer said, "It's important to have sanitary services while we are clearing out the riverbed." Todd Spitzer said, "Treat people with dignity and respect." Todd Spitzer said, "I'm going to encourage you to ask my Board to establish bathrooms and wash stations at the riverbed." Todd Spitzer said, "I don't consider it humane to have the nearest restroom a minimum of a 30-minute walk away." Todd Spitzer said, "The Board of Supervisors is ready to support the city of Anaheim with the full resources of the county." Todd Spitzer said, "The county has hundreds of millions of dollars to spend to help the homeless and it has not spent it, and that is shameful. Imagine my surprise when none of this was agendized for today's meeting." So when is it happening? Because the only part I have seen is increased enforcement. There needs to be a sufficient drainage system by the water bottle filling station at Round Park Park. There are pools of standing muddy water that have no place to go. This needs to be fixed immediately so that the activists do not have to repeatedly attempt to do the job of public works. Vector control is spraying there for West Nile virus. If this is not fixed soon, you will wake up to headlines stating that there is a West Nile outbreak among the riverbed homeless population. If the sanitary systems are not provided soon, you will wake up to headlines about that state that there is an outbreak of HEPA among the riverbed residents. I hear about San Diego tourism already being affected, conventions are canceling, tourists are changing plans. Will this soon be happening in Orange County due to the lack of sanitary conditions? This should be the number one priority in the plan to help the homeless. And trust me, even the residents who oppose sanitation in the riverbed will be blaming all of you if the lack of services leads to any kind of health outbreak. If deaths result, the lawsuits will be enormous, as you know about this problem. You've known about it for quite a while and you've done nothing about it, thereby demonstrating a gross mismanagement of government funds. It is time for us to hold you accountable. A state of emergency has been declared in Orange County, not because of fires, hurricanes, or even earthquakes, but because there are over 33,000 people waiting for Section 8 housing with an eight-to-10-year-long waiting list. There is a severe shortage of affordable housing, and yet there's $700 million the county has stored away. For what? I don't know. However, you have been unwilling to spend it on housing for the poor, for those it was originally earmarked for. The Orange County Board of Supervisors will be held accountable because if you don't act swiftly, every street in Orange County will have thousands of homeless people living on the sidewalks in front of every home. Thank you.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors. I did want to update you on the Anaheim declared emergency. The first day in the emergency action against the riverbed community began two Fridays ago. I was there. There were dozens of police. They, I'm using the Alice's restaurant analogy here, they moved in with dozens of police with force. Patrol cars and undercover cars lined the riverbed and adjacent parking lots. They had paddy wagons standing by to take away the many criminals living in the tents. Support staff armed with cameras to keep track of all the miscreant arrests followed the armed and ready police force. They moved through the encampments with impunity, engaging the hapless evil criminals, moving with intent, taking names and snapping pictures. I didn't see the police dogs or SWAT with their military equipment, and I was sure that this was a dangerous mistake as they faced off with the frantic, treacherous criminals in the riverbed. But I want to, I want to tell you here that the final tally was that they, with all these people coming in from east and west and north and south, they made three arrests. Three people were arrested on warrants. One I knew was a warrant for driving on a suspended license. So again, once again, we spent tens of thousands of dollars on, we didn't move out 20% of the people in the riverbed, as one supervisor stated we might do. We moved out 0.71% with all of our efforts here. And that was the three. But you know, you know what I've brought up before is the deaths of homeless people in Orange County. And from July 17th to August 17th, everything has jumped up. Now it's 33, 33 died in one month on the streets of Orange County. You know that this, I somehow, when I speak to you guys, I can't cry, but when I, when I do the things like this, I feel like crying. My daughter was there at the riverbed that Friday and I can't, I could hardly get her to come there because, you know, just her being there, she'll cry seeing, seeing what's going on. So I hope that, you know, we've changed some of the rhetoric and I hope we've learned a bit from this too, and that we can move ahead and have some solutions soon. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Board of Supervisors, my name is Muhammad Ali. I'm the Executive Director of the Orange County Poverty alleviation Coalition. The last time I took this podium, I was led away in handcuffs because I was addressing the insufficient services provided at the courtyard, the untrained, unlicensed security guards staffed at the courtyard. That's, that's staff contingency. Those people are people with criminal records, people that should not be working in that capacity as security guards. And as a result, there have been sexual abuses and physical abuses of residents at the courtyard. Immediately after I finished speaking, Supervisor Todd Spitzer accused me of misleading the listeners. I was not misleading the public. That's when I got led away in handcuffs because I took the podium to defend the veracity of my statements. The courtyard still has unsanitary conditions. The courtyard still has unlicensed staff. And that's shameful. And it's all because the county does not want to allocate the resources necessary to actually have a decent shelter. That can be changed. It's just a matter of resources. I mean Supervisor Doe opened the courtyard. Supervisor Doe, I believe, should be responsible, not only is it in his district, but it's also his crowning achievement was opening the courtyard. Make it a halfway decent place. Otherwise, you're responsible. I mean, a few days after I was arrest, I was led away in handcuffs from this podium, I was then arrested at the riverbed. County Council, Leon Page, you sent a lawyer. You sent a lawyer down to the riverbed to try to see what they could charge me with. And they have me with polluting? Polluting? I could be facing a felony for polluting because I used bleach. I used bleach to clean the area around, around the bottle filling station in the context of a HEPA outbreak and the context of a HEPC outbreak that Todd Spitzer referenced in his comments to the Anaheim City Council, the council that just declared a state of emergency. And so I'm disgusted as a member, as a member of this legal profession, I'm disgusted that you would use the criminal justice system to try to silence activists and to try to stop our work, to try to save lives. You're a disgrace to the legal profession, Mr. Page. Michelle Steele, there is an encampment in Fountain Valley that is not being served. That is not being served, and that's in your district. So we started a homeless engagement initiative addressing the encampments in Anaheim and Orange. They are not being served. And a man was killed. A homeless veteran was shot to death by police in Huntington Beach. This is even as the Huntington Beach City Council is shutting down the Intervate Shelter in Huntington Beach. What is going on? Is it any wonder that people are dying on the streets?
Your time is up. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Dr. Jordan, the next three speakers are Bruce Creel, Justin Sampson, and Kimberly O'Neil.
Madam Chair, I pushed my button.
Yes.
You know, as elected officials, we're a free game for the potshots, but when they attack our staff, I take great offense to that. That comment about Mr. Page and his reputation in legal community, he has one of the finest reputations in the legal community. So you can say whatever you want about us, we're public figures, but if you want to come here and attack our staff, we're going to respond. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jordan. I'd like to start off today by talking about the county's augmented budget, which is coming up for a vote, I believe, on September 30th. I would highly encourage this Board to put any remaining funds left over the, from the original budget towards permanent supportive housing, either directly building it or capacity building. The ACLU said in a recent study, I believe, last year, that the county only has enough permanent supportive housing to house one-fourth to one-third of its chronic homeless population. But building more permanent supportive housing would help the county in a number of ways. You know, first off, I've seen the county put large amounts of money towards case managers, which I think has had a bit of an effect. I see them everywhere. I talk to people who have had more interaction with caseworkers now. But it's important to empower your employees to be able to find homeless people housing. And the simple fact of the matter is that there's not enough housing available right now. I also think that increasing the stock of permanent supportive housing would help augment budget cuts in other areas. For example, the healthcare agency budget has been cut over the past 10 years. The county needs to find innovative solutions to providing health work, health services to our most vulnerable residents. And studies show repeatedly that people in permanent supportive housing suffer fewer negative health outcomes, more better health outcomes. They use ambulances far less. They rely on emergency hospital services far less. This is something borne out in research over and over again. This is why the county could save money by using permanent supportive housing. Regarding capacity building, I think there's a lot of money coming down from the state level soon. We had a number of bills passed in the California Assembly and State Senate recently. You know, there's going to be about, I think, $300 million coming down guaranteed from the real estate transaction tax or fee. And there's also potentially $4 billion coming down the tube. It's important for the county to have the capacity to capture some of that funding. And I'd like to finish a bit about, talking about the riverbed. You know, regarding the French drain, I find it extremely troubling that, that problem with the water drainage at the water bottle filling station sat there for months on end. Then we go there to fix it and 30 minutes later, four people from Public Works and the entire homeless outreach team from the Sheriff's Department and Anaheim PD and Orange PD are there, you know, harassing us for trying to fix this. We don't want to do it. We would rather have the county take this on, which is why, you know, even if I disagree with Todd Spitzer on a number of areas, I would commend his, his statements to Anaheim City Council recently. And I think it's time for the rest of this Board to act on those statements and start providing basic sanitation for the people of the riverbed.
Thank you. Supervisor Doe.
I appreciate your, the thoughtful tone of your comments, and you identify the problem pretty clearly, which is supportive housing, supportive permanent housing. But I think it's necessary to highlight the fact that the county really doesn't have a lot of control over where housing projects can be built. Those decisions are made by cities. And, somebody's talking.
I work with a coalition that would be interested in sitting down with you to talk about.
Okay, no, no. I'm just saying to you that if you, if you guys have Pacific projects, bring it forth, and I'll be glad to listen to you.
Okay, I'll reach out to your office about that.
Thank you.
Pacific projects, not just complain about.
Next speaker, please.
Good morning, I'm Bruce Creel, and I'm a resident of Tustin. And thank you for this opportunity to speak to you. Thank you Supervisor Doe for opening up Great Prayer and Supervisor Spitzer. And I especially want to thank everybody in the room that stood up with their hand over their heart to pay some, a simple act of respect to our flag and the veterans that died for our rights to be here. Thank you. The, I've been going down to the riverbed for about a year, ministering to people and the homeless, and I found that many have shared their stories of abuse, every type of abuse you could imagine. Abuse at the hands of their family, abuse at the hands of their, the group homes they've been put in, abuse of the state institutions, abuses, sexual abuse, drug abuse, addiction abuse, every abuse you could imagine. They have great testimonies and stories. I called for mentors of the community to come down and mentor these people, and actually what ended, they ended up doing, these young ladies ended up mentoring me on what needs to happen. I don't believe hotel rooms and temporary housing and group homes would be a solution here at all. It's just perpetuate the cycle of abuses that have already taken place. Our church, Saddleback Church, is opening up a new church in Yorba Linda at a high school. And I believe many of these people need to be at the head of the class to share their testimonies and stories of abuse so it does not perpetuate into another generation. It's appalling what I've heard down there and what I've seen. I invite you all to come out to church sometime in Yorba Linda, and I pray that we can all get together on this subject and I've seen many miracles happen on the riverbed since I've been there. And thank you to the sheriff that is now patrolling the riverbed. I've seen a lot of improvement down there. It's calmed down considerably, so thank you. And again, thank you for this opportunity to speak. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Madam Chairman, Honorable Supervisors, ladies and gentlemen of the, of the audience, I come before you today because as an Anaheim resident, as a candidate for the state legislature, and as a concerned citizen who has walked the riverbed countless times, seeing the conditions of the residents there. As we all know, SB 2 has recently passed, which will mean there will be hundreds of millions of dollars coming down the pipe to Orange County, and that would be meant for low-income housing. My hope is that Orange County can be a leader in making sure that we can end this plight of homelessness, we can house our homeless brothers and sisters, and we can move towards affordable housing for everyone. Housing is a human right, and I personally believe we can be leaders in that. The only question is, is the Board of Supervisors willing to use that money for that purpose? I read somewhere in the newspaper a few weeks ago that $200 million is in reserves in terms of money that could be used to help mentally ill individuals, but $5 million have only been spent for that purpose. And unfortunately, from what I have seen from the Board of Supervisors in the various cities in Orange County, there have been basically games of passing the buck and excuse-making in terms of dealing with this issue. My call to you is to actually deal with the issue, take responsibility for it, and actually help our homeless residents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Dr. Kimberly O'Neil, the next three speakers are Lou Noble, Rusty Kennedy, and Kenny Noe.
Hi, good morning to all the supervisors. I come once again to speak. My name is Kimberly O'Neil. By now you should know my name. Basically, I'm here to talk about the issue that has been going on for months with other activists behind me that have come forth and talked about this issue, and it continues to be an issue, and not just the county, but other cities. Like my city, Orange, doesn't seem to care about it, which is homelessness. There are thousands of people that live down in the riverbed. There are people that have needs, whether it be housing, whether it be a place where they can find employment, or a place where they can feel comfortable and safe. And that is probably not the issue. And I feel like we can't just hide from it and think it's going to go away on its own. It's just not. You have to really look into this. And each and every one of you was voted on to represent this county and to do good things, and I would hope that that would be the case, that you guys would care enough to actually go out into the riverbed or go out into any of the shelters and, and talk to the people, get to know them, know their story, know what their struggles are, and find a solution so that there are no diseases, so there are no people on the streets that have mental illness, that are able to find a place to actually live that they can actually afford. If it wasn't because I live with my mother, I would probably be out on the streets as well, because housing here is extremely expensive. It's not cheap, and whoever can afford it, you know, probably make six figures or something along those lines to be able to afford a house or even apartments that are very luxurious that are down over, close to where the Angel Stadium is. And so I really would hope, and I really pray, that you guys would really take this into consideration and work with other cities and find a solution to this problem. That's all I ask. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Lou Noble, there is to Anaheim. First of all, I want to ask, who do you serve? A quotation from Thomas Jefferson back in way back, kind of like a prophecy, says, "If the American people ever allow private banks to control the issue of their currencies, first by inflation, then by deflation, the banks and corporations that will grow around them will deprive the people of all their property until their children wake up homeless on a continent their fathers conquer." I believe the bank institutes, institutions are more dangerous to the liberties than standing armies. The issue, power should be taken away from the banks and restored to the people who have property belongs. Now, Jesus left the temple going back and was going on his way. When his disciples came to point to the buildings of the temple, but he answered to them, "You see all these, do you not? Truly, I say to you, there will be not left one stone upon another. That would not be, that would not be thrown down." We see certain things here. We don't come here to actually plead with you, but to warn you of the things to come unless you do the right things that need to be done. Because we have come here to actually tell you all these things that have, that are now coming above. Law enforcement is not the answer. Criminalizing the homeless is not the answer. It has worsened because it has given people oppression, which leads to depression, which leads to mental illness. A lot of people out there with PTSD. They need help. Not today, not tomorrow, but yesterday, they needed help. So please do what is right, because you could only serve one God.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good morning, Madam Chairman and Honorable Members of the Board of Supervisors. Good morning. My name is Kenny Noe, and I'm a 40-year resident of the city of Huntington Beach. And I also spent 23 years serving on the Orange County Human Relations Commission. I'm here today speaking as a private citizen. In prior meetings of the Board of Supervisors, you all created an ad hoc committee, tried to try to do several things with respect to the commission, which included more transparency and to prevent, try to distinguish the commission from an organization called the Orange County Human Relations Council. All very admirable goals. In the spirit of cooperation, while I was a commissioner and continuing on, the staff of the Orange County Human Relations Commission opened its books and said, "Yes, let's work together to try to make sure that you all feel that the commission is a valuable part of the Orange County family." I'm here very specifically to talk about Agenda Item Number 46, which is presents a revision of the bylaws, which unfortunately were drafted without any input at all from members of the Orange County Human Relations Commission, its staff, in spite of the fact that numerous requests were made to staff to say, "Let's get together, let's follow the mandate of the Board of Supervisors to get together and create a dialogue in an institution that you all feel good about." I'm very disappointed about the fact that this document is being presented to you without any input, not only from the staff, but also from community groups that are truly the partners and benefactors of this organization. As a minimum, this process suggests that there just wasn't enough time to have a proper dialogue and discussion, to the disservice of every person living in this county. And for that reason, I'm respectfully requesting that when this item comes up for discussion, that this Board put it aside and say, "Yes, we're serious about a dialogue. We're going to make sure that this ad hoc committee does in fact meet with staff, because we do want to have a working organization, a commission, that serves all of the people in Orange County." And I think that's the right thing to do. And as constituent, I would say the people of Orange County deserve this, and I thank you very much for listening to my presentation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
After Rusty Kennedy, the next three speakers are Peter DiMarco, Sarah Gregory, and Bill Kosarev.
Honorable Board, it's an honor to be here today. I, speaking for OC Human Relations, your contractor and vendor supporting the staffing of your Human Relations Commission, I wanted to offer to work with County Council, the ad hoc committee staff, as well as the commission, the OC Community Resources, and the, and the nonprofit, to bring about some bylaws that are within what will, I hope, satisfy all of the different issues that have been raised. It is never, it has never been our intent to not do exactly what all five of you would like in, in the course of that. And so, you know, I, I think the bylaws as they're, as they're presented here, which we have not had the opportunity for any discussion or input into, have some problems, some significant problems. And I think that we can work, though, to implement some of the ideas that have been placed there into an alternative version of those bylaws and bring that back to you. If we can work with your County Council to, you know, revise your committee staff to, you know, see if it meets their needs, get feedback as we go forward, as well as with commissioners and, and, and the, and the, and the nonprofit. Thank you very much for making that offer.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sheena Inoscente, and I'm a resident of Tustin, and I'm also a social worker, and I've been a service provider to homeless populations for the past five years. I wrote some stuff down just so I won't forget anything, so I'm just going to go over that. Number one, as always, I'd like to advocate for housing funding. I know that the county has $700 million in discretionary funds, and that the ACLU has recommended that we allocate at least $55 million a year for the next 10 years to provide the permanent sustainable housing that our community desperately needs. We currently have 90,000 people waiting on the waiting list for Section 8 in Orange County. Many of those people are families with young children. These are young children who are not getting to enjoy the child development milestones that so many of us got to enjoy because they don't have the space to play. So when I'm here advocating for- So, when I'm here advocating for homeless, I'm not just speaking of the people on the riverbed. I'm speaking of the 90,000 families who are waiting for Section 8, who are living in substandard housing. I also would like to speak out against the arrest of Mohammed. I think it's a waste of taxpayers' money to arrest advocates for trying to keep our community safe. I'd also like to second what Jordan said about putting the augmented budget funds towards permanent sustainable housing. Fourth, I'd also like to speak up about the shooting that occurred in Huntington Beach. I do think it's related to homelessness and the lack of permanent sustainable housing. If that individual had been in permanent sustainable housing, I don't think he'd be dead today. Wages are stagnant. If wages had increased at the same rate as inflation, we'd be at above $23 an hour in California right now. I have a hard time sitting and eating at restaurants, knowing that the person serving me is probably not even able to afford housing. It doesn't feel good. There are plenty of models that are successfully delivering housing for services to people in LA. PATH, Community of Friends, LAMP, just to name a few. There's not a, this idea that there's not a service model that we could successfully put out there is false. There are plenty of service models. The funding is just not there. Yes, there's going to be people who don't want these things in their community, and we'll come over those challenges later, but right now, we're not even there because you guys won't even approve the funding. Homeless experience is an ongoing state of trauma. Housing should not be a reward for good behavior, but a fundamental human right. Transitional models view homelessness as individual failings rather than a structural issue and market failures. Lastly, I do think California Public Records Act should honor the retention of the records for two years. I think it's dangerous to adopt this policy where you guys may allow for records to be destroyed before two years. So, in my last seconds, I'd like to just continue encouraging the Board of Supervisors to empower yourselves to put that funding available so that those of us who do want to serve the homeless will have the funding at our fingertips to adopt these models and to address the problem of homelessness in our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Happy day. Thank you for serving. I'd like to thank Todd Spitzer for taking a minute out of his day at the last Anaheim City Council meeting to shake hands and have him a word or two. Good, happy chatter. Please, thank you, sir. On May 11th, 2011, it was reported that OC Sheriff's Department civilian employee Diane Hollenbeck had used her position with the Sheriff's Department to threaten people and influence civil and criminal proceedings. In response, the sheriff sent me a form letter, which I've submitted a copy of to you, and Sheriff Chris sent me a text message, actually, a lot of text messages. At one point, he states that he has to go. He has to follow hospital rules, rules that you and your people don't like to follow. I'm kind of wondering what the sheriff is referring to, and he says, "You and your people." Well, he thinks I'm crazy. He thinks I'm mentally ill. He wants to silence me, and he wants to make sure that his friend, a civilian employee of the Sheriff's Department, is allowed to threaten and use her position as an employee of the Sheriff's Department to do what she wants. They, the Orange County Sheriff, the Orange County Public Defender, Orange County District Attorney, and Orange County Courts, keep saying that they were following the law as if one day it will come true. Someone wrote a book about their personal struggle just like this. It's called Mein Kampf by Adolf Hitler. You do not need to try and tell the same lie, hoping that one day it will come true. It has been done for you. The lie never becomes the truth. To continue telling the lie, Gossip-Garian filed forged plea agreements in court with the help of Judge Mansourian. Alan Cravaro, who's retired, did the same thing. Once a fraud, always a fraud. Things invalid from the beginning cannot be made valid by a subsequent act. So, no matter what this board does to me, no matter what Anaheim does to me, no matter what the cops do to me, no matter what the sheriff does to me, it's all a lie. It's all fraud. That's why I'm reporting it to you. Because if these issues are addressed in a timely manner, you create fewer homeless people. You create fewer dissent among the Sheriff's Department and among the public defenders and among the district attorney. I come offering peaceful solutions to these, and I hope that we will have a meeting soon where we can address these issues. Thank you. Happy day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
The last two speakers are Margaret and Louis Hernandez.
My name's Margaret Sharp. Thank you for letting me speak. I'm an advocate for the homeless. First of all, I am against the arrest of Mohammed. He was just trying to help protect the safety of the homeless people. I think it was wrong to arrest him. There is the Hep outbreak, and he was just trying to protect the health of the people there. I just think it's wrong to arrest him. He was just trying to help. So, I'm against that, first of all. Second, I'm against the trying to erase email records. There needs to be transparency. And to me, the very idea that you want to erase it makes me think that there's something to hide. So, that's not, there needs to be that transparency. And then also, in terms of the homelessness issue, it's really a state of emergency. I'm just wondering if the city of Anaheim can declare a state of emergency for the riverbed. Why can't we, Orange County, declare a state of emergency? Go to Governor Jerry Brown, say it's emergency. For the Fairview Developmental Center, he has control over that. That's a state-owned facility. He has the ability to go in and take over that facility. That's under his control. If you guys can work with other cities and areas to take that and use it for the homeless people and to use it, I mean, use it for, you know, they need it right now. It's available. So, maybe a state of emergency is the way to go. If the cities don't want to work with you, you know, try something else. And also, I think with the homelessness, the affordable housing issue is huge because all these cities are going in and they're building luxury housing with the zoning codes, and they're allowing developers to go in there and put in this, supposedly, they're trying to get new affordable housing, but what they're really doing is putting in housing that nobody can afford, and they're taking away housing, affordable housing that exists. And I think there needs to be addressing, you can't address the homelessness issue after it's already happened by people being forced out. You need to, there needs to be some oversight of the cities, of what they're doing and how they're allowing the developers to force people out and to create homelessness. So, that needs to be addressed. I think that's about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comments section. So, we're going to move on to actually comment section. CEO Kim, no? Any comments from the supervisors? No? Do we have any adjournments? No? Okay. Board will now recess to a closed session.